Good evening. The San Dimas City Council meeting and a Housing Authority meeting for Tuesday, May fourteenth will come to order. Please rise and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This evening we'll be recognizing our older American, Mr. Nikowicz. Well, you're not the older American.
Our but it is my pleasure. First of all, thank you to the mayor and the city council for inviting me tonight. It's every year the city, the county of LA and the city of San Dimas recognize an older American in the month of May. It is my pleasure to introduce the two thousand twenty-four older American honoree. This year's nominee follows a long list of very impressive former honorees. In the spirit of recognition, I want to recognize all the seniors, hundreds of seniors volunteer their time every day in the community. They work in classrooms, hospitals, they help with youth sports, they work in food pantries, they host bingo, and they work in the senior center. They do so not for the recognition, but they do it to stay active and to help make their community a better place. This year Nancy Brewster will represent San Dimas at the LA County Older American Recognition Day. I want to tell you a little bit about Nancy. She was born in Chicago. She actually grew up a few miles away from where I grew up in the south suburbs of Chicago. She grew up in a blue collar home where she learned the value of hard work. She was married to Dennis, who passed away in two thousand and nine, for thirty-three years. Today I wear my Chicago Bears shirt in honor of Dennis, who played for the Chicago Bears. Nancy helped Dennis manage his podiatry business before she began her thirty-two-year career at Huntington Hospital. She retired two years ago. Nancy has lived in San Dimas for many years. Nancy has four children, eleven grandchildren, and three great children. Many of them are in the audience today along with her friends. Nancy hasn't slowed down in retirement and represents how active productive seniors should be. She helps with her grandchildren, she volunteers at church, she volunteers at Huntington Hospital, and is very active in the San Dimas senior community, including being on the senior commission for the last five years and an active member of the senior club. Nancy is instrumental in starting the San Dimas Senior Travel Club where seniors could socialize, share travel ideas, go to seminars, plan trips together, and work with staff to develop excursions that seniors find attractive. Her hard work and persistence has paid off as today the club is very active and enjoys, enjoyed by many senior citizens. It has been my pleasure to work with Nancy on the senior commission for the past five years. She is highly liked and respected by her peers. She is also a great role model for her family and friends, and I'm proud to call her a friend. With that, I'd like to present Nancy Brewster.
Thank you very much for the honor. I do everything I can to help my family, my community, my neighborhood, and anyone that I can. My motto is kindness rules, and that's what I do in life. Thank you very much for the honor.
Nancy, Nancy, if you'd like to just have a seat, I'd like to read a little something from the city.
Okay.
Thank you. City of San Dimas proclamation. Whereas for the past fifty-nine years, the month of May has been proclaimed throughout the county as Older American Recognition Month. And whereas the city of San Dimas recognizes that older adults are trailblazers advocating for themselves, their peers, and their communities, paving the way for future generations. And whereas we appreciate the value of inclusion and support in helping older adults successfully contribute to the benefit from their communities. And whereas during the month of May, the city of San Dimas is celebrating the birthdays of those residents who are this year will obtain the age of ninety and older. And whereas Nancy Brewster, active volunteer in the city of San Dimas, has been selected to represent this city in the city, in the Los Angeles County as Older American Recognition Celebration. And whereas San Dimas Senior Citizen Club, the Bingo Committee, the Senior Citizen Commission are commended for their volunteer commitments and financial contributions for the betterment of the city of San Dimas Senior Citizen Community and the residents of San Dimas. Therefore, I, Mayor Emmett G. Bader, Mayor Pro-Ten Ryan A. Vienna, council members Rachel Matacos, Eric Nacano, and Eric Weber do a claim, May as Older American Month, and urge every citizen to take this time, this month, to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital citizens who greatly contribute to their community. In witness thereof, I, Mayor Emmett G. Bader, have here on to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of San Dimas to be affixed this fourteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-four. I've known Nancy for a long, long time.
Softball fan.
Our children played softball years and years ago. I've known her and Dennis, and it's with great honor that I present this proclamation on behalf of the city. And everybody here should take note. This lady does her job. We're going to take an item off of the regular calendar and move it up to this calendar. At this point, we'll bring up senior club's annual report. Debbie Malouf.
Good evening, Mayor Bader, city council, and community friends. I am, as said, I'm Debbie Malouf. I'm treasurer of the San Dimas Senior Citizens Club, and I'm here this evening to present our annual report on our community donations. The report will cover the calendar year two thousand and twenty-three. Our community donation money continues to re-raise through our Tuesday Bingo program held at the Plumber Building, active since approximately nineteen eighty-two. We average ninety to a hundred players weekly post-COVID. Our two thousand and twenty-three donations are as follows. City of San Dimas for special events and utilities, five thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. City of San Dimas for the holiday extravaganza, five hundred dollars. Hope Partners Food Pantry, San Dimas site, two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Hilltop Church Food Pantry, one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. New Song Food Pantry, five hundred dollars. Holy Name of Mary Food Pantry, two hundred dollars. All coffee money and cash donations for the pantry from Bingo are included here also. We also donated three hundred and eighty-eight plus bags of non-perishable food items delivered weekly to two pantries collected at the Tuesday Senior Club and Bingo. YWCA Grab and Grow and Lunch Program, one thousand dollars. Meals on Wheels, San Dimas Laverne, one thousand eight hundred dollars. San Dimas Sheriff Boosters, five hundred dollars. San Dimas Fire Station, in the manner of gift cards, five hundred dollars. Senior High School Scholarships, ten, eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. We actually awarded an additional twenty-five hundred dollars in scholarships, an additional four that were not remitted, unfortunately. Our elementary schools, Exstrand, Allen Avenue, Gladstone, Schull, each five hundred dollars totaling two thousand dollars. Chaparral High School, seven hundred and fifty dollars. San Dimas Nature Center, five hundred dollars. San Dimas Rotary Foundation for the help with food for military families, five hundred dollars. David and Margaret Home, five hundred dollars. San Dimas Historical Society, two hundred dollars. March of Dimes, one hundred dollars. Our total donations for cash donations for the year two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. The senior club had one hundred and seventeen members in two thousand and twenty-three. We had eighty-five attend the holiday luncheon. We had one hundred and forty-eight play bongo at our December fundraiser, raising thirty-five hundred dollars plus. We purchased new bingo equipment to the tune of thirteen thousand six hundred dollars. We incurred a new expense in two thousand and twenty-three with liability insurance. Also, with the addition of our holiday bongo two years ago, we were able to assist a needy family at the holidays and provide ten gift cards in November and December to unhoused seniors. This concludes the report of the San Dimas Senior Citizens Club donations for two thousand and twenty-three.
One active group of seniors. Thank you very much on behalf of the city and all the organizations that benefit from your hard work and having fun playing bingo and stuff. Thank you. Okay. At this time, I would recognize Parks and Rec to discuss San Dimas Girls Wrestling CIF Championships.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Tonight, my name is Dominique Borba. I'm the Recreation Supervisor. I have the honor to introduce Jack Nance, the Assistant Principal at San Dimas High School, to recognize two amazing athletes tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Bader and City Council. I never thought I would be around long enough to see one of my students on the city council board, and here I am. Rachel, I'm very proud of you. So I would like to also introduce our principal. This is Omar Mayen, San Dimas High School. Emmett and I have talked many times. There's our school and our athletes and students could not thrive the way they do without a partnership we have with the city of San Dimas. We're a small school, but we have a loud roar when it comes to athletics. We get to honor two great students today. I get to introduce our swimmer. So let me give you a little bit background here. Her, she is a four-time varsity swimmer, a four-year varsity water polo player. She's a two-time MVP water polo player, two-time MVP in swim, and that's for the league. She's a seven-time school record holder. If anybody's been around, our records have been there for a long time by a student with the last name Divine that crushed our records, and they've been there since the nineties. And she broke some of those. So not only she did that, she's an incredible student, and better than that, she's a great person. So I would like to introduce our two thousand and twenty-four fifty-yard freestyle CIF champion, Carolyn Kao. One other fact I forgot to mention. She is a first swimmer in San Dimas history to make it to the state championships. So she competed there last Friday. I would like to now introduce our wrestling coach, Coach Jesse Heimy.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen and women. Thank you. It's an honor to be here again to represent our girls wrestling team. And once again, we have another CIF champion in Charlene Smith. Charlene is a three-time varsity letterman for our wrestling program. She's a three-time league champion, and she is a three-time Masters qualifier. So she went to state this year, in her third time, and she is going on to be her fourth one next year. So we'll see what we can do and probably bring home, hopefully, bring home the state championship with her. Just a little fun fact about Charlene. Her very first year, she said, I'm just going to try it one year, and then that's it. And here she is being CIF champion. I look forward to having more of these next year with her. Charlene Smith.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to bring up our homeless services update from Recognize, Lily Flores, Community Development.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. Lily Flores, Housing Manager. Today, we're going to give you our housing services update. Our department and division has been really busy this past year, and so we're going to give you some highlights of what we've been doing. A little bit of background, the city of San Dimas Community Development Department is committed to overseeing the goals and actions in the efforts to prevent and combat homelessness and to preserve the quality of life for all of San Dimas residents. We did a two thousand and twenty-three community survey, and addressing homelessness was one of the top priorities. So since then, we've been making a lot of efforts to meet those, these goals. Through the combined efforts of city staff, LA Sheriff's Department, Los Angeles Homeless Initiative, San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, and homeless service providers, the city of San Dimas continues implementing the goals and actions as outlined in the plan to prevent and combat homelessness, which is the homeless plan that was created in two thousand and eighteen. Goal one was a better understanding of the needs of San Dimas homeless population. The goal two, two was to ensure all people experiencing homelessness in San Dimas are entered into the regional coordinated entry system. Goal three, expand and improve immediate housing solutions. Goal four, expand opportunities for employment and workforce development. And goal five, explore options for preservation of existing affordable housing. To meet one of those goals of, sorry, I was trying to thought, to address the needs of the homeless population, the city contracted with LA CADA last year, starting in April in two thousand and twenty-three. We went into a five-year contract agreement. We have two full-time employees that are here on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays from eight to five. And just a little bit of highlights for the first year of what they've accomplished. They've accomplished by linking forty individuals to interim housing, four individuals to permanent housing, twelve individuals to substance use disorder treatment, and twelve individuals to mental health services. They're also here, and they'll be speaking a little bit more in detail of that for you. We also have a collaboration with our Code Compliance Division, our Housing Division, LA CADA, and the Sheriff's Action Team. We have quarterly meetings. We've created a priority list of the top homeless residents of San Dimas, and we meet on those quarterly to discuss their housing solutions. We're also part of the COGS supplemental team. This is where we get LA CADA just one day a week from Tuesdays from nine to three-thirty. They have a two-to-three member team in our city depending on availability. And to be able to get this service, we have monthly meetings with the COG, and we have quarterly meetings with all the cities that are a part of this service. And this is for two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four. I did want to point out that for twenty, for next fiscal year, we are going to continue participating in this program, except that the COG is going through a more regional approach. So we won't have a designated team to our city on Tuesdays. We haven't been told yet what day we'll have somebody, and it's, like I said, it's going to be a regional approach. So we're going to have to share them with other cities, surrounding cities that are a part of the COG. One of the big things that we did was council-approved a new position, which was our House Housing Services Coordinator, Sandra Chacon, started with the city in October of two thousand and twenty-three. She has a master's degree from Cal State LA, and she worked with the Department of Mental Health for ten years. So we're very happy to have her. She'll also be speaking in a little bit to give you some more information on what she's been doing. She really hit the ground running. We're very fortunate to have her. One of the big things that she accomplished in the first couple of months she was here was getting CES and Homeless Management Information System access for our city. There are cities that are still trying to get it from two thousand and eighteen, so we were very fortunate to get this. And having Sandra on our staff, we were also able to be a homeless service provider. So because of that, we have not only access to see who's in the coordinated entry system, but we're also able to enroll people in there, which is a really good benefit, because any connection that we make with a resident, we're able to put it into the homeless, the HMIS, and also see who we've, if we contact somebody and they say that they're in HMIS, we're able to actually look and follow their history. So it's a really good benefit. We also applied for housing solutions funds through the COG. This was a ten thousand dollar grant. We received this grant in January of two thousand and twenty-four, and we were able to assist four households and expend all that money in two and a half months. And we applied for an additional amount, which is in today's council meeting, one of the consent items, so we could get another ten thousand dollars. The COG is just giving it in ten thousand dollar increments, and we were able to show that we know we need the funding, so we were able to get another ten thousand. Sandra will go in more detail of the four households that we were able to assist with that money. We're also doing a rental assistance program with our PLHA funds. These are funds that come through the Los Angeles County Development Authority. The activity that we chose was housing for homelessness. What we do is rental assistance and rapid rehousing for those that are homeless or at risk of homelessness. And it, to be categorized as at risk of homelessness, you have to be between twenty and thirty percent AMI, and be paying more than fifty percent of your income towards your housing. So we have two hundred and fifteen thousand, about two hundred and sixteen thousand to spend by December two thousand and twenty-four. We're really pushing that, we're really pushing that program right now. We're currently assisting twenty-one seniors with sixteen months of rental assistance. And then these are our expenditure deadlines for the following two years. See, it's really dwindling down, because this money comes from the count, from the state, which has to deal with real estate transactions. So because of COVID, the amounts are a little bit lower for the upcoming years. And we're also continuing preservation of our existing affordable housing. We have the Charter Oak Mobile Home Estates. They have their own rental assistance program and a facade program. We have the Monovista Place Senior Apartments, where we have twelve affordable units for seniors. And we did the transfer of the one-two-three North Monovista Avenue for Habitat for Humanity. They're almost at the crossing line, so pretty soon we'll be able to come back to you on that, and so we can break ground. We continue to do our citywide rehab program, and then we have the continuous monitoring compliance of Avalon's Affordable Covenants. They have twenty-six rental units for low to moderate income households. And then we have our Mobile Home Accord, where we have the annual rent increases. And then we continue participating in LASSA's homeless count, their point in time count. In two thousand and nineteen, our numbers were ten, twenty, twenty, sixteen. The homeless count was canceled in two thousand and twenty-one because of COVID. In two thousand and twenty-two, we had twenty. And then in two thousand and twenty-three, LASSA started using a regional approach and didn't designate cities an actual number. They gave us our rough estimate, because we still did the count, and so for two thousand and twenty-three, our rough estimate was nine. For this year, we haven't received the results yet. Based on the count that we did, we're estimating about a twenty-three count, which is really where we're at right now. And then at this time, I'd like to introduce Sandra Chacon, and she'll go over of the actual housing services that she's providing.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Sandra Chacon, and I am the Housing Services Coordinator. The city of San Dimas is committed to addressing homelessness by collaborating with federal, state, local government agencies and homeless service providers to address the needs of individuals and families experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. individuals and families experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. We identify individuals and their needs. So these are some of the community agencies that we work closely with to ensure that these residents get the services that they need. Veterans Affairs, if there is an individual that's identified as serving in the armed forces. The Social Security Administration, to ensure that individuals are receiving the benefits that they're eligible for. And a lot of LA County partners. We work closely with the sheriff, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, if there's a safety issue or if an individual needs to be 5150ed. The Department of Mental Health for individuals that need mental health services. I work closely with the Home Team, which is a homeless outreach mobile engagement unit. They come out to the community and address these mental health needs for individuals. We also partner with the Department of Health Services for individuals that need medical care. They have mobile clinics throughout the service area, so we collaborate with DHS to ensure that the individuals receive those services. The Department of Public Health, if substance use is an issue, we link them to substance use treatment facilities to make sure that they receive the care that they need. Department of Public Social Services to establish benefits. Again, if they're not receiving GR, General Relief, or SNAP, the food stamps, and we make sure that they're linked to benefits. The Department of Children and Family Services, DCFS, if there's child welfare. I have collaborated with DCFS just to make sure that if an individual needs services, that they are linked to those services. As well as Aging and Disability Department for abuse and self-neglect of older adults and individuals with disabilities. And then with the Department of Economic Opportunity. So it's workforce development to make sure that individuals that need to increase their income in order to obtain stable housing are linked to employment opportunities. We also work really closely with housing service providers, LASSA, which is the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, to identify individuals with high acuity that can be matched to housing resources in the community, as well as Union Station Homeless Services, Volunteers of America, Catholic Charities, Door of Hope, Family Promise, and East San Gabriel Valley, if there are families that are identified, if there's domestic violence, or if there's children, to make sure that they get connected to services specifically for families. Also, the Union Station referring them to the FSC, which is the Family Services Center. And the Self-Help and Recovery Exchange, which is Share. That's for individuals that have some sort of income, to link them to rooms, so they can rent their own room and have their own space. You know, just really kind of accessing the resources available in our community to ensure that individuals have the opportunity to obtain stable housing. The referrals are received primarily through our outreach team. I get a lot of referrals from the Sheriff's Department as well, city employees, local residents, and my San Dimas and the GoGov app. So case management services include interventions to most appropriate program, again, referring them to those community resources, linking them to local shelters, interim housing, permanent supportive housing, enriched residential care facilities for individuals that have disabilities, rooms for rent, affordable housing, and of course, employment. These are some of the successful placements that we have had within the past seven months, and again, utilizing the resources available within our community. We were able to house a 79-year-old man that was homeless for over 30 years in the City of San Dimas. He is currently at an enriched residential care facility through the Department of Health Services. We have also linked a 62-year-old man that was homeless in the City of San Dimas for over 10 years to interim housing with a path to permanent supportive housing. And a 66-year-old man that has been homeless for over three years in the City of San Dimas also to permanent supportive housing through LACTA voucher, which is the Los Angeles County Development Authority. Again, it's really building these relationships with our community partners. I work closely with like the local charity groups, local nonprofits, the Succi Buddhist Foundation, the Catholic charities, local landlords, to make sure that all of the services that individuals are seeking, we put a plan in place for them to address homelessness. Through the Housing Solutions Fund, as Lilly mentioned earlier, we have been able to provide case management services in addition to financial assistance to ensure that families are able to manage their expenses. One of our individuals that we served was a single mother with an infant that was living in transitional housing. We were able to provide financial assistance to her to help cover the deposit and the first month's rent. Again, provided case management services, linking her to local food pantries, doing money management to make sure that she's able to sustain her unit after the financial assistance. We also have a family of three, which was two adults and a school-aged child that was at risk of losing their housing due to rental arrears. With the grant that we received, we were able to provide financial assistance to pay one month's rent, and then again, case management services to make sure that they're able to maintain their unit moving forward. We have another single mother who was at risk of homelessness and unemployment due to rental arrears. We were able to provide financial assistance to pay the arrears. She's also on track. She has been able to build a safety cushion by having savings in her account, so that she makes sure that she's able to pay any expenses that come about. And then a homeless family of six, which was two adults and four minors under 11 years old, were moved into permanent supportive housing. We were able to link this family to the FSC with Union Station. They provided rental subsidy for her, and we were able to provide financial assistance to pay for the furniture. This family was living at a local motel, and when they didn't have money to stay at the motel, they would sleep in their car. So it was really necessary to link them to appropriate services so that they are able to maintain housing moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Now, I'd like to call up Joshua Heinzman from LA CADA, the Homeless Services Director.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Sandra, fantastic having you guys. I just, I always start, I think, when I've had the privilege of coming to your meetings, your city's dedication to making an impact on the homelessness is more clear each time I come to one of these meetings, especially with onboarding of Sandra, and you see from some of the data that she provided to you, that it definitely makes an impact when you have folks that are out there doing the heavy lifting to help the people that are in most need of it. Some data from April 17 of '23 to April 26 of '24. I want to remind you that when it says, we didn't, okay, we didn't have it. So 197 housing navigation services, so housing navigation should be the primary focus in getting folks entered into the HMIS system, as both Lilly and Sandra pointed out. We've had 41 individuals linked to interim housing, and that's through a mix of places, through other nonprofit providers, as listed up there. 12 individuals from mental health services. For us, looking at mental health services is really important, because you look at that being one of the underlying causes of homelessness. So for an individual that's able to get linked to that sort of care is good, because you're addressing the underlying cause, potentially one of the underlying causes of homelessness. Four individuals placed into permanent housing via family reunification, and also one individual that was able to get into safe parking, and also another that, based off of their medical acuity, was placed into a skilled nursing facility. And we've also been able to have 13 individuals who were willing to accept services for their substance use, and they were placed at facilities such as ARC, which is out in this area, Exodus Sobering Center downtown, behavioral health services, Lake Hughes Recovery College Medical Center. And we currently have an individual from your city right now in residential treatment in our Santa Fe Springs Allen House location. That's really sort of the raw numbers. Juan, who is your primary boots-on-the-ground employee, unfortunately, has been experiencing some significant personal and family issues and was not able to come tonight. He really was the one that I wanted to be able to highlight, because he's doing the heavy lifting with your code enforcement, with Sandra, and with your dedicated team from the Sheriff's Department. What I can tell you is, within the last month, there was one individual, a female, who was experiencing homelessness for roughly four years. She receives SSDI and in the past had refused services and oftentimes looked at as service resistance. She had a dog that often presents as a barrier to getting an individual indoors. We were able to do, complete some housing navigation with her, sort of overcome the barrier with the dog, and finally get her to accept services. And so she is currently in an interim housing situation where she is paying for a portion of her rent that is not exceeding, is a dollar amount that's practical based off of her income, so that she would be able to still meet her monthly needs elsewhere. And the individual that we have in treatment, the last time Juan and Selena checked in with that individual, they were doing very well and being compliant and programming well. So that's what I have for you for updates. Again, I wish Juan was here. He could speak a little bit more. He's your boots-on-the-ground guy. I kind of just am looking from above what he and Selena are doing, but again, some really good work, and I cannot continue to say it again. I commend you as a council, utilizing your resources, hiring Sandra, having Lilly. While that homeless count number might seem small, it's not for a community as small as yours. And, you know, I am a firm believer that, you know, having this comprehensive team that you've assembled, that number, you know, will eventually drop. So that's all I have for our update on the LA CADA side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Last but not least, we have the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, Sergeant Hubbard.
Mayor, council, all my friends, I'd like to talk about, my name is Sergeant Hubbard. I've been in San Dimas for two years, so I haven't been here that long. In the last year, I've been assigned to the Community Action Team, or CAT Team. Basically, I have three deputies with me, and we have a flex schedule. Basically, we don't get any calls for service. What does that mean? That means that we have a lot of time to work on problems that we identify, the city identifies, and we have the time to really work through these problems with all our great partners. One of the things that we're working on is the homelessness and encampments. So from January 23 to May 24, May 14, 24, San Dimas Station and the CAT Team have been assigned 1,650 calls for service due to homeless and encampment-type issues. And we've worked through these issues with LA CADA, the city, code enforcement, and we all work really well together. And if we didn't have that flexibility, we wouldn't be able to put all that time, effort, and energy into it. So that's kind of what I do and the team does. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. That's all that we have for you. We're here to answer any questions, if you guys have any.
Any questions of Lilly and her team? Seeing none, thank you very much. That being said, we'll go on to oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the City Council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual agenda item, except for public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to staff or set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to speaking once for up to three minutes. Do we have any cards?
Mayor, the first speaker is Dr., I do not want to butcher your name, Joshi.
Thank you, sir.
Honorable council members and city citizens. My name is Hasmuk Joshi. I'm an anesthesiologist by profession and have practiced at San Dimas Hospital for 37 years, starting in 1983 until 2019. I'm partially retired now. I am a resident of Gainesboro Road. I'm here to present some concerns that homeowners have from that area. I'm going to read my statement. Many of us are here tonight. We live in an un gated residential area of South Valley Center, south of Cypress Street, specifically on Wellington, Gainesboro Road, or Edinburgh Road, west of South Valley Center. Most of you are aware that at the end of South Valley Center, at Gainesboro Road, there's a staging area, which connects to both Bonelli and Chevron Trails, and has open space for day parking of cars, horse trailers, and trucks. What we have observed, that this is an area frequented by some very questionable elements, especially at night hours. During the last few weeks, we have experienced break-ins, including our home, by unknown suspects, vandalized mailboxes, suspicious vehicles with no plates, canvassers approaching homes during the day and evening hours. For my home burglary, I do not have the burglary report from the Sheriff's Department yet, which, by the way, costs $25. That's an insult to an injury. When we have the police, the Sheriff's Burglary Report, we would know of the response time from the Sheriff's Department in responding to alarm company notifications and/or homeowner calls. We are here not to point fingers. We are here to find solutions. And in that reference, I would want to ask the city, is there any assistance in any form, guidance in any form, financial or otherwise, that can assist with extra patrols, day or night, weekdays and weekends, including cameras for Gainesboro, Wellington, and Valley Center? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Joshi.
The next speaker will be Richard Morris.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for giving me this time to just introduce myself. My name is Rick Morris, and I am the chairman of the Board of the Rising Stars Foundation. This organization has now been in business for 53 years, and the Rising Stars has three major programs. Our biggest program is the Equestrian Therapy Program for Special Needs Kids. And we work with both mental and physical individuals. We're working out of Horse Thief Canyon. We just moved in there just recently, and we love the place, and we love this beautiful city already. So the other two programs, we have a Soldiers Helping Soldiers program, and we also have a So the other two programs, we have a Soldiers Helping Soldiers program, and we also have a Senior Citizen program, where we put on a show every year. I don't know if you heard about it. It's called the Silver Fox Follies. And we've been doing it now for 15 years, and it gives our senior citizens, I'm afraid I'm one of them, but it gives our senior citizens a chance to do what they always wanted to do in college and high school and fell by the wayside. So I have 68 performers in this show, and that's going to be in September. I'll tell you about that a lot later. But right now, one of our biggest fundraisers is our annual golf tournament, and that will be at the San Dimas Canyon Golf Center in June, June 10. So if you're swinging a club, or you know somebody who does, we would more than welcome them to join us because it's going to be a wonderful day. We always have fun with this particular situation. So I'm not going to use all that time. Thank you so very much for allowing me to. I have some information if somebody can pass this on to the clerk, and we're looking forward to working with you in the upcoming years. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next speaker is Allison Margolin.
Hello. Thank you to you all. My name is Allison Margolin. I am the attorney for Mr. Zoriz Mercarien here in the audience, and this is relating to the matter for public hearing one with respect to the ordinance, respect to the recycling center.
Excuse me, ma'am?
Yes.
Can you hold your comments until that item is called?
Yes, thank you.
It'll be after the consent calendar.
Okay, thanks so much.
The next card is also for Mr. Margolin, Marco, her client. So he wouldn't wait until the public hearing is called.
Sorry, what?
The last speaker card that I had was for the public hearing, item one, that she just spoke of.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Sir, come to the podium, please.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am representing our neighborhood on Sutter Court and Gold Rush, which is directly adjacent to the recycling center there.
Question? That item will be discussed?
I'm sorry?
Could you hold on until that item gets called, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
I apologize. I didn't see it on the list. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time?
Good evening, mayor, and the council member and the residents. I'm just saying something. This is the first time I'm in the meetings. I'm kind of shaking. In just connection with what Dr. Joshy says, we would like to know if city or the sheriff department is taking care of any of these criminal activities that is going on. And it happens during the daylights now. Forget about the night. So I don't know what city can do about this to take any precaution. As individual household owners, we are taking care of whatever we can do to put cameras or whatever it is. But these criminals are a step ahead of every one of us. So I don't know if city can take some more precaution to take care of these issues. Recently, it has been going on a lot of things, especially south of Cypress Avenue. So I would like, this is a main concern for most of the residents that are over here, and we would like to know if city can do something better to help us out. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Probably our best resource right now is our sheriff's captain standing out there at the back door here and everything, and he's been talking with your, you know, people from the community, and I'm sure that they're going to look into the situation. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council?
Hello, sir. Excuse me, until I just kind of came for something else, but this is something I wanted to bring up since I'm here. I also live on Valley Center. It has nothing to do with this at the moment, though. I've been dealing with the city for quite some time, back and forth, regarding Valley Center Avenue, northbound from Stater Brothers up to Gladstone. I was told years ago that that was owned by Glendora, and therefore anything would be done with the street itself would have to go through Glendora. Through their help, they were able to put a white line up to show that it was at least one lane, and then some arrows on the floor. Unfortunately, not everyone abides by that. My son's been back from college two weeks. He's been involved almost three times in accidents along that route because there is no sign going northbound that shows that it's a merging lane to one lane. I asked the city of Glendora if they could make it be a bike lane or something of that nature. I've not received anything. They said they were getting ready to pave it. That was a year ago. What I am asking is, because of the fact that the sidewalk is, of course, on San Dimas property, if the council could send a safety team out there to look at it for a short amount of time, it wouldn't take more than 30 minutes to see what I'm talking about, and they could have a merging lane somewhere near the shopping center itself to warn or alert individuals driving northbound that it is a one lane. But constantly, people are going around. I've had, the sheriffs can attest, we've had multiple accidents at Valley Center and Juanita due to the fact that people are passing on the right, or they're just speeding up and they don't want to let the other person pass. So if you can get that out, I'd very much appreciate it. My name is Ken Sanchez. If you have any questions, I live on Valley Center, just south of Juanita, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is Sherry still here? Sherry, could you? Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time?
Hi, good evening, council, councilwoman, staff, and community, as well as the sheriff department. I'm here. I missed the study session for the SB 9, SB 10. I don't know if that was, was that on the agenda for a while? Okay, okay. I thank you for that. We need to get on that as a city. We need to get on that as residents. As you guys already know, I have a petition with 40 residents that are not for the SB 9 and SB 10, especially in my area. I'll give you their names when you're ready. I know we're working on that. The next thing is safety. I noticed that we're not having a public safety meeting at this time. I thank you for the sheriff's numbers as well as the housing numbers, and this neighborhood right here, the Gainesboro area, is starting to have the crime that we have had, that we have actually, you guys have all helped us. We've all worked together as a community, as well as my neighborhood. We utilize the sheriff, the CAT Team that was here, and hopefully Captain Ash, you guys can meet, Captain Ash. My sister-in-law is here. She brought all her neighbors as well, to explain some of the situations that we've been going through with the mail theft, home burglaries. You know, we just had recently, this month, a smashed truck window, almost a stolen car, and I have the six flock cameras in my area that covers the six entrances into my neighborhood. You guys have two areas that you could cover with possibly this type of camera system that hooks to the sheriff with the software on any stolen vehicles, any Amber Alerts, any felony vehicles. It's a great system. I'm also working with about seven other HOAs in our city, as well as one back here. If you can raise your hand. Margie's Community back there, they're at the top of San Dimas Avenue North. We had a meeting. They called me because I'm familiar with the system. I've had it for two years. I can, I have a crime report. I keep the crime in my neighborhood for the last five years. I know my statistics, what's going on. I have a very good communication with Hubbard, with Ash. I mean, that's no disrespect to Sergeant Hubbard and to Captain Ash, but it's a very close relationship, as well with many deputies in this city right now. We get new deputies in and out. They know us on our streets. They know my neighborhood. They know my HOA because I work with them constantly. It's a great feeling. I didn't get to give you my crime report, but they're all here. They asked me to come as well. They haven't spoken yet, and I speak. I'm not the best speaker. But also, we had a gentleman here with, real quick, his name is Ralph Rocha. He's an owner of a security patrol system. He lives in San Dimas. He's a San Dimas business. He will patrol your area, my area, if you want to do a patrol. We also would like to work with the Vaughn Center, and that was with the mayor and Weber, on possibly utilizing a San Dimas business.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
And getting patrols. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and be, when will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council requests separate discussion. Move approval. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 5-0. We'll move on to public hearings. Item number one, Resolution 202427 to introduce an ordinance, 1306, approving the following related application with migrate, mitigated, mitigated negative declaration for development of a 63,749 square foot warehouse office multi-tenant building on a 2.58 acre site located in the southwest corner of Cataract Avenue and Allen Avenue, 309 West Allen, 917 North Cataract, and 929 North Cataract Avenue, APN 8392-016-008-048-047. Community development?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to actually take the recycling ordinance one, which on your outline is item number two, if that would be okay.
All right. I guess we'll move on to item number two. Discussion consideration of introduction of ordinance 1307 Municipal Code Text Amendment 22-0002, a municipal code text amendment to amend Title 18 zoning of the San Dimas Municipal Code to create a standard of regulations for recycling facilities, donation boxes, and non-US Postal Service mailboxes. And amend Title 18 zoning, Chapter 18-08, definition to reflect the changes associated with the proposed standards pursuant to SEQUA Guidelines, Section 15061B-3. SEQUA does not apply to this item because there is no potential for causing a significant effect of the environment. Therefore, no additional environmental review is needed at this time. Community development?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. Louis Torrico, Director of Community Development. The item before you tonight is a request to introduce ordinance to create standards that would regulate small recycling facilities, donation boxes, and non-USPS mailboxes. Currently, the code does not have any standards to regulate these uses. Therefore, the city staff created a policy in 2010 and later amended in 2013 to include the mailboxes. Under the current policy, staff has approved two recycling facilities, one located behind the Stater Brothers Shopping Center, and the second one located behind the 711 on Arrow Highway and the 57 Freeway. We've also approved currently this one approval for one donation box located at the 711 at the corner of San Dimas Canyon Road in Foothill, and there are several non-USPS mailboxes located throughout the city. Over the years, staff has received several complaints about recycling facilities. Therefore, as a result, the city council initiated staff to initiate a court amendment to create an ordinance that would create standards to regulate recycling facilities, the donation boxes, and the mailboxes, which would include standards that would address the current concerns raised from residents and would also codify the current policies we had in place. The proposed ordinance before you tonight would codify the existing policy and create additional standards to address impacts caused by these facilities. The Planning Commission considered this request at their March 21, 2024 meeting and recommended approval of the ordinance to the city council. The ordinance before you tonight will include provisions as to where these uses are allowed, development standards such as setbacks, height, area, and distance from residential uses, and will also outline the review process and discontinuation of use if these uses cannot conform to the new standards that would be created. It's important to note that the ordinance does include a discontinuation of use. So these provisions, if uses cannot comply with these proposed standards, the uses will have to actually discontinue and cease operations. This will be applicable to the recycling facilities and donation boxes, which will have to be discontinued within one year after they've been notified that they are nonconforming with the ordinance. The ordinance does also allow for the owner, operator, or Lisi of these facilities to appeal the decision or request an extension for up to one year to be approved by the Planning Commission. It's important to note that of the two recycling facilities, the one located behind the Stater Brothers Market would not be able to comply with the standards requirements that are being proposed. Under the proposed ordinance, there is a distance requirement that these facilities be located no closer than 200 feet from residential uses. These standards are being put in place to protect residential properties, not just the ones adjacent to this facility, but residential properties throughout the entire city. Since this is a citywide ordinance, we only have to notice a public hearing in the newspaper. However, in an effort for full transparency and to make sure that those impacted were aware, we sent direct mailings to the owners of the two recycling facilities, the donation box, and to the property owners where these uses are located. So it is important to note that while it might seem that this particular recycling facility located behind Stater Brothers is being targeted, the goal of this ordinance is to protect residential properties throughout the entire city. It's not just the residents that are adjacent to this facility, which are the ones that have complained, but in doing so, the research for this ordinance, we did look at other cities in regards to what they do in terms of distance requirements, and we are proposing 200 feet. There are some cities that are actually a lot more restrictive. Some are 50 feet, some 100 feet. We felt that 200 feet was a good distance that would help mitigate impacts from these facilities, mainly noise, and unfortunately, this particular facility would not be able to remain in that location. That concludes staff's presentation. The Planning Commission and staff recommend that the city council introduce ordinance 1307 to create standards to regulate these uses. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, please approach the podium.
Good evening, council member and Mr. Mayor. I'm coming up here because with this ordinance, it would be shutting down the recycling center, and we would be unable to relocate because it is a non-transferable license. So it is licensed to the specific location. When we spoke with the Planning Commission, they recommended that we relocate, but that would not be a possibility. Another big thing is, I feel like it would be impacting the community by having the recycling center be gone because it is a convenience zone for all the people who live around that area. That's mainly it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am, for waiting.
Thank you. Sorry for starting a little early there. Thank you. My name is Allison Margolin, and I represent Mr. Mercarien, who just spoke. We're here tonight to ask the council that if the council's inclined to pass this ordinance, that it reconsider the abatement period. And I know that the current proposal involves one year, but this type of business, we would recommend that the abatement period be expanded to something closer to five to 10 years, or at least that the ordinance allowed that the Planning Commission do an extension such as that. And the reason is, what Mr. Mercarien said, that this type of license cannot be transferred between one location and another. So he would have to really restart in another city or another, maybe somewhere in LA County, but definitely in another city, which would require hundreds of thousands of dollars in expenses. I also wanted to just raise the issue as to why this is even happening in the first place. We understand that there is a public nuisance, but the nature of that nuisance has been somewhat vague. My understanding is that... My understanding is that some of the issues have to do with homeless population possibly being at the recycling center, and I think we just heard quite an interesting report on this issue from staff members, that that issue is being aggressively handled by the city, and at this point, there's, I think, approximately twenty-three homeless people, which even in a city of thirty-three thousand such as this, I do think is pretty low numbers. But that being said, I believe that that's not the responsibility of Mr. Markarian, although he and his father are more than willing to talk to the city about any type of plans or ideas or proposals they can have to abate whatever the issue is, and at this point, they have not had that opportunity, and they would like to have that opportunity. And with respect to this issue, I think it's important to note that this issue of homelessness and even what a city's responsibilities are and what it can do is presently before the US Supreme Court in the case of Grants Pass, which was just argued this past April, and the US Supreme Court has yet to even decide the issue of what a county or city can do, let alone an individual. So our first request would be to amend this ordinance to allow for a greater period by which the existing nonconforming use can abate. Of course, we'd like this not to pass at all, but if it does, that would greatly be able to help, I think, the community, also the Markarians, and allow them to then be able to find a location and reapply and start this business anew. Our primary request, though, would be to reconsider even passing this ordinance due to the fact that they would be the only business that would basically be excluded and without, I believe, any sufficient foundation that they're a public nuisance. But he would ask the council to to communicate about this, and he would be willing to make changes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Mayor, just a question. With a public hearing, there is no time.
Shouldn't be no timeframe.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Were you finished, ma'am?
I just have one last sentence. I just also wanted to refer the council to a petition that I filed on behalf of Mr. Markarian. He and his father collected approximately six hundred signatures in opposition to the council's action with respect to his recycling center, and that's been filed with the clerk tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, sir?
Thank you. So on this subject, I would like to read what our residents put together. Let me turn this right here. Excuse me a second. Okay. So the recycling center has impacted our lives for over a decade. It sits right there at the very threshold of our homes and has become more than just a facility for waste management. It has involved evolved into a source of constant distress for our neighborhood. We are right there, Gold Rush Center Court. The presence of this center has raised serious public safety concerns due to the unregulated influx of foot and vehicular traffic. The narrow streets that were once safe for our children to play are now thoroughfares for large motorhomes, individuals seeking recyclables to to process there. This not only disrupts the peace, but also poses a threat to the well-being of our residents. Moreover, the quality of life we once cherished has been marred by the incessant noise, shattering of glass, and the boisterous sounds. So it has robbed us of our tranquility that we deserve. The issue extends beyond noise and traffic. It encroaches upon our very sense of security. When the operator of the recycling center confronts us with intimidating remarks knowing our personal details, it instills a fear that transcends the nuisance of noise and traffic. It's a stark reminder that our privacy is at stake. We acknowledge the importance of recycling and further support the city's green initiatives. However, the current location of the recycling center is untenable. It is not a question of convenience but of appropriateness. There are alternate sites, we hope, where such facility would be more suitable and less intrusive. So of course, we're not adversaries of progress or environmental stewardship. Our plea is simple. Relocate the recycling center to a designated commercial area where it can operate without diminishing the quality of life. On another note, it's the northbound Valley Center area that the other gentleman was talking about. This center impacts that merge also, and it's very dangerous because a lot of people have to turn right into the center, and it just screws everything up right there. Excuse that term. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Mira Popova, coming from Tech Green Inc. We're located in Los Alamitos, California, and we're actually representing the one location of donation bins that you mentioned on the seven-eleven in San Dimas on six sixty East Foothill Boulevard. And what our company does is we have collection bins for clothing, and we service this location five days a week, so we keep it very clean, and I just wanted to basically let you know, like, if you do decide to make any changes to the law, like, we're happy to comply with anything and get permits, as long as we're not restricted from, like, operating on this location and potentially expanding. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing, sir?
Good evening, everyone, and my name is Sean Gibson, Mayor. I'm reading this on behalf of my neighbors as I live and am a resident of the area. It states, "Good evening. As a homeowner that lives near the recycling center, our concern is the loss of tranquility, and the present added attention to the recycling center has generated to our community on a daily basis. We feel and believe there are more suitable locations for the recycling center, not within a hundred feet of homes. I truly hope we are being heard today and not disregarded in our in our concerns. Thank you for your time, and I'd like to add that extra traffic is a hindrance to our neighborhood, and it does disrupt the tranquility of the the area. There are many children in our area, and because of all that extra traffic, it's a lot more dangerous for them especially. Thank you."
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. Good evening tonight. My name is Robert Crane, and I live in the area of the recycling center, too. I've lived there over twenty years, and the last ten years is dealing with this recycling center's been terrible with the noise, the traffic, when you're trying to turn, cars come flying out of there with after they dump the recycles or trying to go in, coming out of our street off of Gold Rush to get onto Valley Center. It's been it's been challenging with the people that it brings around there and and obviously the quality of life. We moved to San Dimas to have a nice area to live in, and it causes a lot of issues besides the trash flying around and and all the people it attracts, and we'd really appreciate it. We're not against recycling. We'd just like to move it somewhere else around industry or not near homes. And I know there's they spoke that there is one recycling on in San Dimas by the Vons or whatever it is over there by seven-eleven, but there's another one in Covina, too, just two streets down on Arrow Highway. So there's plenty of recycling in the neighborhood that aren't near homes. So we just hopefully appreciate if they could just move it. That'd be fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time, sir?
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Samuel Amaya. I will be speaking on behalf of my mother, Alba Amaya, who unfortunately is not here. My name is Alba Amaya, and I reside on one-seven-five Sutter Court, San Dimas, directly southeast of the recycling center. Thank you for allowing me to voice my concerns today. I'd like to start by saying that the Amaya family strongly believes in recycling and benefit to our environment. My ask is to simply relocate the center to an area which lessens the impact to the citizens of San Dimas. The added noise of glass being crushed is is constant on a busy Saturday morning, the only time that I get to enjoy a cup of coffee on my patio. On the weekend when my husband and I are gardening, barbecuing, or simply enjoying our backyard, the noise is very distracting. A refreshing breeze is no longer refreshing, it brings the smell of stale alcohol. On any given week, there are numerous plastic bags in our front and backyard which travel from the recycling center to our home. I'd like to share a little bit about myself. I'm a Cuban-American who came to the United States to flee communism. I grew up in the not-so-nice areas of Azusa and had a very humble upbringing. My parents worked very hard, and we later moved to Covina. My dream was to become a registered nurse, and I did that. My husband and I purchased a house in Covina, but our dream was to move to Laverne or San Dimas. That was our American dream. In two thousand and fifteen, our dream came true, and we were finally able to afford our home on Sutter Court. Not only did I live in San Dimas, but I work right down the street as the department administrator for the Kaiser Permanente Clinic on Arrow Highway. I share this because I want to know how much I love my home and our city. I'm invested in this community and plan on living there for a very long time. We raised our children here, and this is our home. Please relocate the recycling center so I can enjoy my morning coffee on my patio, take a deep breath, and enjoy the summer breeze, and relish my clean yard. I say you do the right thing, which perhaps may be the more difficult choice, but the best choice for the citizens of San Dimas. I will close by asking you, would you want the recycling center in your backyard? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll... Sir?
Mayor, council, thank you for taking the time to hear me out tonight. My name is Fortino Maya. That was my son Samuel with the beautiful words that my wife wrote down. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous here. I have a letter here from one of our other neighbors that was not able to make it tonight. If you'll indulge me, I would like to read it. Honorable members of the city council, I stand before you today to express my concerns regarding the recycling center that situated perilously close to our residential neighborhood. I urge you to consider to relocate this center, not only as a matter of convenience, but as a serious quality of life and safety, issue that affects each and every one of us who calls the community home. Firstly, the incessant noise pollution is a primary concern, the clanking of glass, the constant hum of machinery. The frequent movement of vehicles are not mere inconveniences, they are disturbances that disrupt our daily lives. Our homes should be sanctuaries of peace, not backdrops to a symphony of industrial clamor. Moreover, the safety of our neighborhood is at stake. The increased traffic of heavy vehicles poses a risk to the pedestrians, especially our children and the elderly. The recycling trucks, while essential to the process, should not be navigating through areas where our families walk, play, and live. In addition, the increased foot traffic caused by the recycling center has made our neighborhood a target for theft and other such property crimes. There has been an increase in the mail thefts in the area during the recent years with many of those who frequent the area looking also see our neighborhood as a target of rich opportunity, not to mention our incidence of property stolen from our outdoor sheds, trespassing through our yards, and many more. When we approach those that run the center regarding our concerns, we get the response of, "I know where you live, I know what car you drive." We as neighbor we as a neighborhood should not have to live in fear. We must also consider the potential for environmental hazards. Proximity to such facilities can lead to increased air and ground pollution, which could have long-term health implications for residents. In conclusion, while we fully support recycling and commend the initiative to create a greener city, the proximity of such a facility to our homes is not acceptable. We must find a balance that allows us to live safely and comfortably without compromising our civic duties to the environment. Let us work together to find suitable location for the recycling center, one that serves the purpose of sustainability without diminishing the quality of life for our constituents. Thank you for your time and the attention and to this pressing matter. My neighbor Christian. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, one more time. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? Sir, you've already spoken, right?
My name's Ken Sanchez. I live on Valley Center, and I've dealt with this gentleman several times. I've never had a problem with him. I've never had a problem at his location. I respect him for what he does as his free enterprise, but it was moved there several years back from behind Ralph's. Since that time, we have seen an increase. We've had mail thefts. I've had quite a few of my residents, my cars broken into, more foot traffic, more transient in the activity in the area. We all know the transient activity's going to increase in the next couple of years, and it's going to just be worse. I would ask that the city council work with this gentleman to process another area for him to be able to establish his business. He should be able to run his business. I have no problem with that. But as my neighbors say, it is a quality of life issue, and we all should be able to enjoy our own quality of life. Valley Center has become a very heavy foot traffic. We have shopping carts left up and down the street. I was under the impression that a couple of years ago, the sheriffs were brought in and told that they were not going to allow shopping carts in there, and that isn't I can say that it doesn't happen. I never see shopping carts in his parking lot. However, what they do do is they come down the street, they empty their parking their shopping cart a half a block away, leave them there, and then walk them down there. So we do have constant foot traffic. We do have several cars broken into. We do have mailboxes getting broken into continuously. Again, I put a lockbox on mine just because of this issue, and to hear the shopping carts, the people going up and down the street continuously is a problem. So I would ask that the city council do something to work with this individual, put it over by the Applebee's, put it in the Costco parking lot, a location that is not near our residence where it does not affect us. Like I said, it was originally behind the Ralph's. There wasn't a problem until it was moved. So that's what I'd like to say, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time?
Hi, my name's Tina Corrine. I live on Sutter Court. We've been there for over twenty years, but since this recycling center has come, you know, into our neighborhood, we have seen a lot of traffic, but besides traffic, it's on a weekly basis that we have to tell people not to dig in our trash can because before they hit the recycling center, they dig through our trash cans. We have trash on a constant basis. I have emailed the city. I have done my part to try to help, you know, make things better, not getting any results, you know, besides, you know, them being, you know, warned, but we always have, like, I would say, trash in all of the, you know, carts that are left on our street. Since the last meeting, we've literally, sorry, I'm a little nervous, but we've had literally rows of grocery carts left on our street now on Gold Rush since our last meeting. It was very concerning that we heard the guy that works there tell us that he knows our cars, he knows where we live, and knows about us. That's a little scary to hear that after the last meeting, and so I just wanted to express my concerns, and we are hoping that you guys actually, you know, relocate in. So thank you for listening.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? You know, at this time, I think what we'll do is we'll ask... And, you know, at this time, I think what we'll do is we'll ask the first speaker, first and second speaker, who I believe are the owners, okay, of the shopping center, okay? If you would like to speak, you know, to what you've heard your neighbors talk about, I guess it'd be up to you.
Something we'd like to propose also is we're willing to work with the residents in the area. So we, I mean, we can change hours of operation, or, you know, limit some specific things occurring. So a lot of them were complaining about glass breaking, so we could limit hours that, let's say, glass is broken. Another thing is with the vehicle traffic, it's a large plaza. We're a small business. The traffic that we create is very minimal compared to all the other businesses that are located in that plaza. It is a commercial zone, so there is a lot of heavy, so not heavy machinery, we have none whatsoever. What we do have is, we do have trucks that come and pick up containers, and it's a commercial zone where many other trucks also come by, such as for the Stater Brothers, which are significantly larger and create more noise than we do. I think the primary concern here is a lot of residents feel unsafe with homelessness and the crime that's been on the rise, but I also believe that has nothing to do with our business. I think it's just the general city, just the general times that we live in, and I think that's an issue that we all have to address, even as business owners or residents.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak at this time? We're going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Questions?
Yes, I have one question. The first is, a recycling center seems a little bit different than a donation box. Why was the ordinance, and what was the logic behind incorporating both, right? One is operational, people are dropping a bunch of things off.
Sure, sure, of course. So this initiated, initially was raised as a concern strictly because of the recycling facilities. So we did get direction to create an ordinance, and in doing so, when we had the initiation meeting, our current policy, it covers recycling facilities, the donation boxes, and USPS mailboxes. So that's why we, during that time when we had the initiation meeting, we suggested that we just codify the entire policy into this one ordinance. So that is the reason why we have these other uses as part of this ordinance as well.
What is a non-USPS mailbox?
It's like FedEx boxes, UPS boxes.
And then with this ordinance, would any of those boxes or donation places be forced to relocate? I know we've mostly talked about the recycling center, but how many?
So from my understanding, the ordinance does not require that the mailboxes be discontinued unless they're creating a safety issue. The donation box, from my understanding, it would comply with the current standards that we are proposing.
Okay, so this then would only impact, it sounds like, the recycling center behind Stater Brothers, is that correct?
Correct, yes. And then when we did the ordinance, we did research other cities, see what they're doing, and also during this time, we actually spoke with the residents, spoke with our code enforcement department, who actually responds to some of these complaints. And our understanding is that the operators do do a good job in regards to keeping it clean and trying to maintain it clean, but there's just some things you just can't mitigate, and the thing noise is one of them. So when you have, anytime they're operating, you're going to hear just the clanging of cans, of bottles, and this is nonstop, so there's just some things you can't mitigate. And I think noise is one of the main things.
How many, how many feet is that close to residences? I know the ordinance proposes, I think, 200, but how close is it to residences now in terms of feet?
So the entire center is actually within 200 feet of residences, so they would not be able to locate, relocate anywhere in the center, because there's residential properties to the north, to the west, to the south, and to the east. So the entire center is actually located within 200 feet of any residential use.
Are they within like 50 feet right now, or 100 feet, or how close are they currently?
From the nearest resident?
Yes. And then I have one more.
If Google Maps measurement tool is correct, about 98 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate my colleague doing that. We heard tonight the owner of the center offer to work with the residents to mitigate some of their concerns. Was there any effort made part of this hearing, or that you're aware of, for the owner to work with residents or receive their feedback and try to work with them, or is this the first time this is happening?
No, so my understanding is that we've had, that facility has been operated there since 2014, my understanding is, and we've had concerns and complaints from these residents for a very long time. So our code enforcement has responded over the years to several complaints. Our code enforcement department has worked and spoken with the managers and the operators of these facilities to try and do what they can to maintain it clean. Obviously, there's certain things they can't control. If people are loitering, or if there's homeless issues which are occurring in other parts of the city, they can control that. But in terms of the noise, it's just, I mean, I believe they operate from, I think, 8:00 AM to like 5:00 PM, and it's just, it's, again, the noise is just an issue that I don't know how we can mitigate.
So he has tried to work in the past on some of their?
We have, our code enforcement has worked with them in regards to making sure that the areas get clean and address the other issues that have been brought up by the residents.
Thank you.
Is that recycling center open seven days a week?
Maybe the owner can answer that. This is the R.
And that's from 5:00 to, or 8:00 to 5:00 or something? And then one question about the donation boxes. Would that include something like goodwill boxes that are located on some, behind some shopping centers and stuff?
Yes, it's all similar ones, yeah. That they receive clothing, things of that nature.
Any further questions?
Mayor, I just wanted to make sure we got the answer to your question on the record and recorded. So you asked if the business was open from 8:00 to 5:00 every day, and the property or the business owner answered yes.
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
Do you want to have him come up to the podium to answer?
Yeah, would you please, sir?
The business is open from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and on Sunday it's open from 8:00 to 3:00 PM.
I'm going to just ask you one off-the-board question. How often are you or your father or family member at that location?
At least twice a week.
There seems to be some, I heard something in the neighborhood saying that when they were talked to or approached, they were, you know, less than very responsive to the concerns.
We've always tried answering all the complaints that we've received. A lot of complaints have no basis, some do, and the ones that we've seen were valid. We've done everything to try and mitigate them. With shopping carts, we have people picking up shopping carts, we clean the area, we do everything we can. There is a cement brick wall barrier between the recycling center and the homes, but I guess the sound isn't mitigated enough with that simple barrier for most of the residents. But it's a commercial area, there's only so much of the sound that we can limit, and not all the sound is us, like I said. There are the large 18-wheelers coming, loading, unloading for the Stater Brothers. So we're not the only ones creating noise. I think the amount of noise that we do create is a, is a normal amount for a commercial zone. I wouldn't say it's unusually loud or obnoxious. Those are the primary things.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I'm going to let you go ahead and speak, but we're not going to open this up.
No, Mayor, if we let another, if we, now is the time to, we can ask questions to the public or to the, yeah, to the public, but if we let someone testify again, then we need to let everybody testify again. So the public hearing is closed.
I'm sorry, sir. No. I've been advised by the council at this point, or by the city attorney. Okay, clang, 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 clang. Thank you. No, I understand. I understand. Thank you, sir.
I have a question for staff. So I've always been pretty direct on where I'm at in my positions, I'll do no different here. So I think it's very unfortunate that the city didn't enact a municipal code regulating this sooner. And so for that, to the property owner, I think that's unfortunate. I think that this probably, you know, I respect the use and I'm supportive of the use, I just don't think this is the right place, unfortunately, as others from the community have said. Hearing their council's request, my question to staff is, and make sure I understand this, is that they would have one year to comply if the council adopted the ordinance, and then they would have an opportunity for an extension of one year after that, so effectively 24 months, to be able to find another suitable location if this was to be adopted and go through whatever permitting process they would need to. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
One quick question. On the, it seems like the center's owner is willing to work with residents on hours, but it seems like, if I'm not mistaken, these centers are regulated by CalRecycle, which also mandates that they be open on weekends and that they be open for a certain number of hours per week. Is that correct?
I know they are regulated by CalRecycle. I don't know that they get into specifics in regards to how many days or hours they operate, but they are regulated by them. And then one thing that was brought up in regards to that if they were to have to cease operations there, that they wouldn't longer be providing recycling facilities for the area, but there is another recycling facility less than a mile away on Arrow Highway and Sunflower. So that will still be met, because CalRecycle does have distance requirements in regards to, for grocery stores, that either provide their recycling services on-site or be located near another one. So the one on Arrow and Sunflower would meet that requirement.
Isn't there a recycle place on Arrow behind the mobile gas station there, the shopping center there?
Yes, there's one there as well.
And the difference is there is there's no houses located within 200?
Correct.
If I may, to Councilmember Weber's question, according to CalRecycle, a center must be open that's not owned by the state 30 hours, five days a week, and one day on the weekend.
Thank you.
What, if anything, can the city do to streamline any permitting process or anything they would have to do if they relocated, assuming it was within the city?
Yeah, so these, actually, these uses, they would actually be approved at staff level, so we can actually expedite it pretty quickly. It's just a matter of finding that right location.
Has staff looked at alternative sites that could probably suit the need?
We did look at, when we were creating this ordinance, we did see, look at what other areas in the city they could locate, and there is quite a bit of areas that are zoned for these uses that wouldn't be close to, or within 200 feet of residential property. So there's quite a bit of areas that they can relocate to.
And are they aware of those locations?
We can share those with them.
In staff's opinion, would it take an extended period of time, say 24 months or more, to obtain the permits necessary to relocate?
From the city, it should be pretty quickly. I mean, they can, it's just a matter of submitting their site plan, finding the location, and director reviews can be done in a matter of days, maybe a week.
But when the owner of the center first spoke, I believe he said that it's, that it's not transferable either by body or by location, and that was a concern, because he can't transfer his licensing there. Is that the way I understood it, or was I wrong?
No, that's the way I understood it. I think he's referring to not a city license, but license from some other regulatory body. So in order to move his location according to the operator, he would need to apply for a new license for a new location.
Through the whole process.
And you could ask the operator about that if you wanted to.
Could you speak to that, please?
The license is non-transferable from the state level, so even though the city may help us with this move, CalRecycle would not allow for a recycling center to relocate even within the plaza.
Are you saying that from speculation, or do you know that for fact?
For fact, it's written on our license.
If, I can...
Directly on our license, it says certification from CalRecycle Division of Recycling, the certification is non-transferable.
Is that non-transferable by body or by location?
By both. So when the application is filled out, you have to specify exactly where you are inside of a plaza. If you were to move even one foot to the left or right, you would have to reapply from zero for the state license.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
The premise of this ordinance is no different than the sign ordinance. We're looking at quality of life and looking at what impacts are there and what regulations we need to put in a place to protect the interests that the city has. In this case, the residential areas were the focus of that area. The city attorney's office with staff researched other cities, took what I think is a measured approach to ensure that we're protecting the single-family residential home areas, or those places where people live that could be impacted by a recycle center, and put together something that sounded reasonable. The amortization period, which is the period at which existing use, which is non-conformant, has to then go away, is at least a year. And so my recommendation, if there's a concern about what this one specific business and what does this mean for them, and what the process is for them to look at an alternate site, and can they get to that alternate site and how they're impacted, could be to pass the ordinance and allow them to go through that process, working with staff in other locations that are viable in the city, and then reassess if it appears that the one-year period is detrimental to allowing that move, and then you could consider that second year that is allowed in our ordinance for amortization. That way, you balance the needs of our residents not to be impacted by the center, in some cases, they've been impacted for 10 years, and then balance the interest of the recycle center to find an alternate location that allows them to conduct business.
Any further questions?
Have we reached out to CalRecycle about any associated licensing issues?
We have not, but I was just informed that I believe on CalRecycle's website, it's just a matter of applying for a new license. So my understanding is, what the owner said is that their current license, or for that facility, you can't relocate it even like within that center, but I don't believe that that would stop them or prevent them or anyone else from applying for a new license at another location.
Do you believe that we, if we were to pass this ordinance, and in an effort to, you know, show some good faith to the operator in this instance, if we, as a city, could reach out to CalRecycle on behalf of his application, potentially, for another location to see if they could streamline that, and let them know that it was our doing and not his in this instance for his application?
It's something that we can do.
I have one last question. You may not know this, Louis, but what is the time roughly that it would take to apply for a new license before it's provisioned, and then what is the cost associated with that? I'm just trying to get a sense of effort.
So I believe that the website says, once they apply to CalRecycle, they notify within 30 days.
Okay, so it's fairly fast.
If it's viable, yes.
And then the cost is, is it exorbitant or pretty manageable?
That I don't know. Maybe the property owner, the business owner can answer that.
Okay. Jeff, are we okay? Jeff, are we okay?
Much of the licensing has to go with things like CUPs for applying for these locations, and CUPs cost approximately, I want to say about $5,000 just for the application with the city, along with legal fees, which are somewhat exorbitant naturally. But the license itself, all the licensing together is a few thousand dollars together. I would want to say about four to 5,000, just in licensing fees. So along with like CUPs, attorney fees, a complete relocation would cost between, I want to say about 15,000 to 20,000.
Thank you, sir.
For the, just to clarify, we would not require CUP for this item. It would be processed at staff level.
Staff level.
I just want to say that I'm so impressed by the city that I think it's very clear that we all want to help this business. We're all ready to jump hoops and make sure that you can stay here in Sandy Miss. You know, the issue is not your business, it's just where it is. So that's really what we're here to decide. And simply, the business doesn't belong close to that neighborhood, it's causing a nuisance, but the city is here to support you, and please continue to work with us so that we can keep you here in Sandy Miss.
And with that, I would move that we read by title an introduced ordinance 1307 approving municipal code text amendment 220002 to create a standard to regulate recycling facilities, donation boxes, and non-U.S. Postal Service mailboxes, and amend Title 18 of zoning chapter 18.08 definitions to reflect the changes associated with the proposed standards.
Second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Pet motion carries 5-0. And at this point in time, we're going to take a break. 10-minute break. We'll reconvene the city council meeting, and we'll call item number two, which is now, was item three, but it's now an item two. Discussion, consideration, and introduction of ordinance 1308 to approve the zone change 22, I'm sorry, Z, Z, Z change, tongue tied. Zone change 22-0001, and approve vesting tentative map, track map 22-0001, general plan amendment 23-0001, development plan review board... Development plan review board 22-0015. Entry removal permit 22-0029. Project 22-0051. A request to develop seven detached single-family residences. Amend the general plan designation of the two parcels from single-family very low to single-family low. Change the zoning of the two located at 327 East Baseline. And an unaddressed parcel APN 8661-017-010 and 011. And amend commercial to single-family low 3.1-6. And change the zoning designation from 17 parcels from SF A 16,000 to SF 7,500 for the properties located at 1102, 1108, 1114, 1120, 1126, 1132, and 1136 Cherokee Court, 315 East Baseline, and an unaddressed parcel at APN 8661-017-009 and 008, 245 East Baseline Road, and 1117, 1121, 1129, 1139, 1145, 1151, and 1150 North Walnut Avenue. And adopt an initial study mitigated negative declaration.
I didn't catch the middle of that. Can you repeat it?
Community relations. Good. You'll be Mr. Lewis.
Our associate planner, Ken Fickdeman, will be making that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Because it's my slide, I have to read exactly what Emmett said again. But instead, we'll skip all that, even though I know you picked up everything. And we are going to break this down by actual project. So we actually have five projects going before you tonight. The first is vesting tentative tract 22-0001. And that is the subdivision of two existing parcels into seven new parcels, which are to be developed with the seven single-family residences. The vesting part of the tentative tract just means that when they submit the map, they are locking in fees and standards at the time of submittal. Next, we have general plan amendment 23-0001. That's the amendment of the general plan designation of the two subject parcels from single-family very low to single-family low. And it's also amending the general plan designation of 17 additional parcels from single-family very low and commercial to single-family low. The next action is zone change 22-0001. That changes the two subject parcels from single-family agriculture 16,000 to single-family 7,500. And it also includes 17 additional parcels to be switched from single-family agriculture 16,000 to single-family 7,500. Next is development plan, development plan review board 22-0015. That is for the design and architecture and development of the seven detached single-family residences. We have tree removal permit 22-0029. That is for the removal of 11 mature protected trees on the two subject sites. And lastly, the project will require the adoption of a mitigated, mitigated negative declaration. Sorry, I needed water after all that. A little background, the properties to be developed are at 327 East Baseline Road and a parcel directly to the north. That is at the intersection of Baseline and Cherokee. That is the northwest corner, the two parcels that run up Cherokee. The properties are currently located in the single-family agriculture, the SFA 16,000 zone, and have a general plan designation of single-family very low. The two lots are currently developed with a single, single-family residence. The rear lot is undeveloped, and the residence that is currently there will be demolished as a part of this project. The applicant submitted an application for the construction of seven single-family residences. The application required the extra actions that we just went over. The applicant proposed a general plan amendment and zone change for only the two subject parcels. During staff's review, staff determined that there were 17 surrounding parcels that should be included in a general plan amendment and zone change. This was for two major reasons. First, it created a contiguous area of both zoning and general plan land use. And it brought a few of the parcels into compliance with their development standards and lot size. On March 23rd, 2021, the project was heard by the city council during a study session. Council at that time found there was merit to allow for a formal submittal of the applications, and agreed with staff that the additional parcels should be included in the actions. March 28th, 2024, the DPRB considered the design and construction of the seven single-family residences, and also considered the associated removal of the 11 trees. DPRB recommended approval of the two applications to the planning commission. Their only change was a modified condition 25 associated with the replacement trees. And then just last month, April 18th, 2024, the planning commission voted 5-0 to recommend approval of all five project applications to the city council, along with recommending adoption of the initial study mitigated negative declaration. The map on the right shows the subject site outlined in green. The sites with red overtones are the additional properties to be rezoned and have their general plan land use changed. The proposed subdivision site is 1.4 acres, as previously noticed, at the northwest corner of Baseline and Cherokee Court. It's important to note, the east side of Cherokee Court is already developed with single-family residences. The first item was the vesting tentative tract map. The proposed subdivision will create seven lots from two existing lots. All seven residences will front and take access from Cherokee Court. And lots are being developed to meet the single-family 7,500 standards per the zone change. The table below shows that all lots do meet the minimum lot size, lot width, and lot coverage associated with the SF 7,500 zone. As one of the conditions of approval for the project, the applicant will improve Cherokee Court. The cul-de-sac was never completed. The applicant will complete the cul-de-sac to public work standards. There will be a 10-foot dedication along the west side of Cherokee Court, which will allow for a sidewalk and public right-of-way in addition to public trees. The next item was a general plan amendment. Just a brief overview, because we don't often come to you with general plan amendments, but you will see a few more in the next few years. General plan land use designation is a macro-level control, which controls what uses can be developed on a given parcel to basic level. So they'll say, commercial, industrial, residential, maybe at 5 to 20 units per acre. It's a, it's a high-level control. It doesn't do any kind of individual development standards. That's controlled by the zoning code. But it gives you a basic idea of what can be done on that property. For residential parcels, the general plan designation can also dictate density. And the general plan designation, like we said, only dictates general uses. The specific uses and development standards are governed by the zoning code. The zoning code, however, may not contradict the general plan designation. The proposed subdivision site currently is designated single-family very low, which only allows .2 to 3 units per acre. The proposed project has a density of 5 units per acre, which would require a general plan designation to be amended to single-family low, which allows for 3.1 to 6 units per acre. In addition to the two subject lots, staff is proposing to amend a general plan designation of 17 additional properties. There are seven properties along North Walnut. Those lots range from 7,500 to 90, just over 9,000 square feet. They do not meet the standards of the current general plan designation. Seven properties on the east side of Cherokee Court. While those do meet the current general plan designation, the frontage would not allow these lots to be further subdivided, regardless of any density we place on those. And actually, the northernmost lot on Cherokee Court is currently designated as commercial. For some reason, when the subdivision was done, they missed re-designating that lot. Three properly, three properties are directly adjacent to the west. This is mainly so it creates a contiguous area of single-family low designated properties. And the landlocked status of those limits any future residential development. This is a current and proposed general plan amendment, general plan map. The parcels outlined in red are currently non-conforming to the general plan. So we are proposing to change those to single-family low, just to clean up the general plan map. The ones on the east side of Cherokee, while they do meet general plan designation, this, there's no change in granting those to lower status. They can't be further subdivided, and they are already developed with single-family homes. The next action was the zone change. The subdivision site is currently zoned single-family agriculture 16,000, or SFA 16,000. The applicant is asking for a zone change to single-family 7,500. The development standards are exactly the same for the two zones. In fact, the SFA portion of our code actually refers to the FS, the SF zone for development standards. So any change in zoning will not create non-conforming residents. They are meeting the exact same code standards. A change in zoning would eliminate horsekeeping as a permitted use. However, code requires 16,000 square foot minimum lot to keep horses. Only the northernmost lot on Cherokee and the southern two adjacent properties meet that standard. And with those, distance requirements from corrals to residences already limit the ability for those properties to keep horses. We don't really see any loss of horsekeeping property with this, with this action. Residentses would lose ability to keep other domestic animals as part of this. Goat, sheep, fowl are all allowed on parcels greater than 11,000 square feet, with, which the majority of these do meet. However, we have not found that any of the residences currently keep these types of animals. Again, this is the map. The one on the left is the current zoning. The one on the right is our proposed zoning. You can see there are already these kind of swaths of single-family 7,500. We're creating a single contiguous area over here. The houses on the west side of Walnut are already meeting SF 7,500 standards. The lots are the right size. They meet the development standards. We're basically correcting a non-conforming situation with those. The ones on the east side of Cherokee, while they do meet the lot size for single-family agriculture 16,000, where they also meet the standards for SF 7,500. The next action was the development plan review board. The DPRB reviewed the grading, fencing, and residence design along with the tree removal permit. At their meeting on March 28th, 2024, the DPRB recommended that the planning commission recommend approval of both the DPRB case and a tree removal permit. The DPRB did not consider the tentative tract map, general plan amendment, zone change, or the ISMND. Those are above what they are designed to do. Grading and fencing, the proposed subdivision sites is lower than Cherokee Court. The difference runs from nearly level to four feet, and it kind of underlates the entire way up the road. To allow for level lots and drainage, the parcels will be raised to be slightly higher than Cherokee Court. Drainage will run from the western property line out towards Cherokee Court, so from west to east. What this will do is create an elevation difference between the proposed sites and the adjacent parcels to the west. The applicant will install a six-foot masonry wall around the property. And for interior walls, this will be a tan split-face wall with a finished cap. However, due to the difference in elevation, the western or rear property line will require retaining wall, which could reach up to four feet tall in places, which would create situations where the combined height of both walls would reach 10 feet if viewed from the interior property. House design, the applicant is proposing two floor plans, each with two different exterior treatments. Each floor plan will have the option to increase the livable space of a residence. One at the expense of some garage space. One will just build additional second-story space. Neither option increases lot coverage. So you can see for Plan A, the floor area is 3,124 square feet, with an option to bump that to 3,290 square feet. That just removes approximately 160 square feet of garage. Plan B, the floor, floor area is 3,321 square feet. There's an option to increase that to just about 4,200 square feet, but that is entirely second-story addition and doesn't affect the garage space on this option. These are the elevations of the proposed houses. They're doing what they call a Spanish-style option on the left and a Del Norte style on the right. Both have been worked, we've worked with the developer to make sure that they meet San Dimas' standards of design. So they both have concrete estile roofs. The Spanish-style has the exposed shutters, the vents, the dark wood door. It's got a brick accent to break up the front facade. The Del Norte style has the mosaic tiles around the door and around the half-wall, along with the stone wall to, again visually, break up the front facade. This is option two. So you can see in this one how the, this is where the optional floor area would be built. This is the standard option. The secondary option increases the floor area for the second floor, but it does not increase the footprint of the house. Development standards, the table at the bottom shows that the houses meet all development standards for the SF 7,500 zone. They all have a minimum 20-foot front setback. They all have side setbacks of 5 and 12 feet. The street-side setback for the southernmost lot is 10 feet. And they are all within the maximum height of 35 feet, the tallest house being 26 feet 8 inches. Last action is the tree removal permit. There are 21 total trees being removed. However, only 11 of those are considered mature trees by the San Dimas municipal code. Five of those are oaks. Five trees are planted along Cherokee Court, including four oaks. For those trees, the location prevents the installation of sidewalk and street improvements. The remaining seven trees prevent or constrain development. The applicant is proposing 42 new trees for the project. Of those 42, 22 will be replacement trees. And per the DPRB, 25% of the replacement trees will be 24-inch box trees, and three will be oaks to replace the oaks that are being removed. The remaining trees are part of the landscape plan, and that may change after going through the process if staff determines that the trees are over-concentrated or otherwise don't work for the project. The proposed development is a project pursuant to CEQA. An initial study was prepared and indicated that the potential environmental impacts were less than significant or could be mitigated to a level of its significance, which necessitated a mitigated negative declaration, or MND, be prepared. That document was prepared. It was circulated for the required 30 days. We received two comments, one from Caltrans and one from a local residence. Both comments had minimal impact on the, on the MND. And Caltrans was basically just asking us if there was going to be any impact. With that, staff and the planning commission recommend that the city council, one, adopt resolution 202430, adopting the initial study mitigated negative declaration. Two, adopt resolution 2024-29. That'll approve general plan amendment 23-0001, tentative tract map 22-0001, and is also recommended by the development plan review board, DPRB case number 22-0015, and tree removal permit 22-0029. And also introduce ordinance 1308, approving zone change 22-0001. It is important to note that all of these need to be passed for the project to proceed. If any single one is denied, the project cannot proceed as is. With that, that is our presentation, and we are here for any questions.
I do have a quick question for you. The middle subject site, B, the one that has RVs stored on it. So it doesn't sound like any development is going to be happening for this particular project on that site. But I just wanted to check and see, would that be a legal non-conforming use on that property now that it's going to be zoned differently?
Well, which use would be legal non-conforming?
The, like, more industrial RV storage type of...
So that is not permitted under current code?
Okay, so it's not conforming to begin with?
Yes, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Ken, talk to me about the zoning. Eliminate, I thought, I heard you say they wouldn't affect a horse.
So if we look at them, all these properties are zoned SFA 16,000. The zoning allows for horsekeeping. But there is a minimum lot size you need to keep horses. The zoning allows for horsekeeping, but there is a minimum lot size you need to keep horses. The seven lots along Walnut are all under ten thousand square feet. They are not large enough to keep horses. The seven lots on the east side of Cherokee, the six southernmost lots, none of those are large enough to keep horses. The northernmost lot is, but the way the property is developed, it would be highly difficult to place corrals on that where you are not in violation. Um, the county has setback standards you have to have for corrals, uh, because of where the house is here, where the house is below it, it would be very difficult to get corrals on this property and meet those setback standards. The middle lot here, those, those two middle lots could keep horses, but again, with the setback needed from these houses over here and then the setback that would be needed from the new houses over here, it would be very, very difficult to meet that standard. Um, so in effect, none of these lots would be able to keep horses, although the majority never could.
I'm just curious, we, is this the same parcel property that has the issue with the, the, there's an easement or a drainage running through it?
There is, there is an MWD easement that runs across the northernmost part of the parcel. It's not an issue, they've worked it into the plans.
Yeah, so if I remember right, and, uh, our recently retired colleague, John Ebner, reminded some of us that, you know, the council had a pretty robust discussion, not just about this project specifically, but the zoning, and the council, and just for history's sake, elected to preserve the horsekeeping or the agricultural zoning and all of this. So you're proposing this, or the applicant's proposing this, obviously to move forward with the project, right? That's where we're doing this? That's irregardless of the council's discussion in the past?
No, council's discussion at the time was to tell us to move forward with the zone change to SF seventy-five hundred. There was a different project that was farther down baseline, closer to San Dimas Canyon. That one, when there was discussion, and council told us to not move forward with the zone change, so we have, that project we effectively killed. Uh, but at the time, we were told that this one was acceptable. March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
Any further questions?
I have one. I have a question about the developer. Does this developer have a track record of building these types of homes and delivering them?
The, the developer is, um, Development One Group. Uh, Stan Stringfellow is here as a representative. They have developed numerous properties within San Dimas.
Okay, so they have a history then of being able to turn projects like this around and deliver.
Yes.
Any further questions?
I just want to clarify, so, um, the two properties that potentially could have horses, they do not have horses or other of the domestic animals that were discussed in the plan?
Correct. We have checked with, or the developer checked with all the homeowners. We have done a little bit of research. None of the properties being affected currently have horses or animals.
Okay, thank you for doing that.
I have one more question. Um, the number of trees that you're removing and then the developers proposed, um, replacing, I know five of them were oak, protected oak, mature trees. How many of them are, how many trees are being, total are being torn down and then how many are being replaced with? So twenty-one trees?
There's twenty-one total trees being removed. Uh, of those, only eleven are considered mature trees by the municipal codes. The municipal code says that any oak tree over eight inches in diameter or any other tree over ten inches in diameter is a mature tree.
Got it.
So ten of the trees on the property don't meet that definition. So we're only considering the eleven mature trees being removed. Five of those are oaks, and we, the DPRB proposed that three replacement trees be oaks to replace those five.
Okay, do we know the other trees? Are they, I know there's been some concern with the council of the types of trees that are in the city. Um, you know, in particular, there are some that are non-native that pose fire risks and other hazards. Do we know what kind of trees they're planning on replacing it with?
We do, they're not the ones that would pose fire hazards like eucalyptus. We are being mindful of what trees should go in.
Okay.
So they are proposing to replace, uh, seventeen California sycamores that will be planted as street trees. That has already been okayed with parks. Um, the remaining twenty trees will be planted in the front yards.
Great.
And we, we, we do have what those trees will be, but we are still working with the applicant once we get final designs to make sure the trees are suitable for the environment.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Any additional questions? We'll open up the public hearing.
And as I said, the developer is here to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Stringfellow, if you'd like to talk.
Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, appreciate the opportunity to be here and to speak to this project tonight. Now, first, I'd like to say that the staff has been, uh, very thorough and professional in the processing of this application. I think that, uh, Ken's presentation, uh, presented a number of well-thought-out, uh, justifications, uh, for the staff's recommendation that this project be approved. And I, I'd like to highlight just a few of those, uh, because he did such a good job. And then I'd be available to answer any questions. Uh, approval of the proposed general plan and zone change amendments not only, uh, would approve the seven-lot subdivision, but rectify inconsistencies in the current land use to the, to the properties in the immediate area. And on balance, um, the proposed amendments are the most conservative and less impactful, uh, way of correcting these nonconforming uses. Approval of the project will complete a public street. Approval of the project helps the city to meet its RENA requirements that have been imposed upon you by the state. Uh, environmentally, uh, and I should indicate, shouldn't, should have introduced some people here. Uh, Leslie Irish is here, along with her assistant, Caitlin, uh, from L&amp;L Environmental. She prepared the, uh, MND. Uh, and, but, uh, environmentally, there are no significant impacts to the environment that, uh, result from, uh, the development of this project. Aesthetically, um, the pro, the proposed project mirrors the east side of, uh, of Cherokee Court with seven lots on the east side and seven lots on the west side. And I hope that the architecture, I believe the architecture will, uh, you know, further enhance a very nice community and very nice neighborhood. And finally, the approval of this project will also help meet the statutory requirements that allow other projects in the city to proceed. So for these reasons and others that could be enumerated, uh, I respectfully ask that you accept the recommendations of the staff and approve this project in, in its entirety. Uh, I don't, I'm available for questions if you have any.
You want any questions? Seeing none?
I don't know if that's a good sign or a bad sign.
I wouldn't know.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this project? I don't know if that's a good sign or a bad sign. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back for discussion to the council.
Mayor, I probably at some point would like a, a five-minute recess. I'd like to see the minutes from the March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one meeting before making a decision on this, and apparently our archive technology is not working, so I can't pull it up.
I, uh...
And that March twenty-third meeting was a study session.
I have, uh, my notes pulled up. I was gonna mention this, uh, I take very copious notes. In fact, I've, uh, I've, uh, been reminded that...
Do you have, do you have the notes?
I take copious notes, and, uh, at a study session on, uh, February eighth of twenty-twenty-two, we discussed this as well. And I have in my notes that, uh, the, at least in my notes, that, uh, my opposition was that if that baseline property was rezoned, it would take properties on either side that had existing, uh, equestrian uses and make them nonconforming. And then by rezoning that property, those properties would no longer be able to have horses if they, uh, they moved out or discontinued that use.
Yeah, I vividly remember, which is why I'd like to see this, I vividly remember discussing going to San Dimas Avenue, and the discussion was that there was really no way taking it to San Dimas Avenue, given the development that's already occurred, that there was really anything gained. But Walnut specifically, and everything to the east and everything to the north, was to be preserved as equestrian, um, or agricultural. So I'm a little, um, surprised not to hear that that's not what I recall, or at least...
If I may real quick, I believe Councilmember Weber, you were talking about a different project, because that was one...
Yeah, that was the one that you mentioned earlier.
That was closer to San Dimas Canyon.
Correct, yeah.
And that one would have made other properties nonconforming, and that one, we did, the, we were sent to the Equestrian Committee as well. That one, we did protect the rights and tell the applicant that council was not interested in initiating a zone change. But this one, because there were no properties that kept horses being affected, that was the difference where we got council approval to move forward.
Is getting the minutes possible tonight?
If you give us a few minutes, we'll get it. I actually...
We'll take a five-minute break.[1277.76]